Thanks. Good morning and welcome to the Community Culture, Arts and Sport Committee number nine for 2021. We've got all councillors in attendance. Are there any declarations of interests on any matters on the agenda this morning? Moving on, I'd just like to move a procedural motion to move outside of standing orders for an acknowledgement of country in committee this morning, so I'll take that to the vote. All those in favour? And that's unanimous and carried. So the acknowledgement this morning is actually words from a New South Welshman, a poet named Jonathan Hill. And I thought it might have been a lovely way for us to celebrate all things art by reading a poem, which also doubles as an acknowledgement of country. So he says, "Today we stand in the footsteps of millennia old. May we acknowledge the traditional owners whose cultures and customs have nurtured and continue to nurture this land since men and women awoke from the great dream. We honour the presence of these ancestors who reside in the imagination of this land and whose irrepressible spirituality flows through all creation." I now like to move a motion to go back to standing orders. All those in favour? And that's unanimous and carried. And we do have it as an action item to improve the meeting procedures, so that hopefully next round, an acknowledgement will be a part of every committee. Just FYI. So moving on to item number one, and that's just the confirmation of the minutes from the last committee, with the recommendation there being that we confirm those minutes, I'll move that. And councillor Kunzaman will second. Thank you. Any discussion on those minutes? I'll take that to the vote. All those in favour of confirming? That's unanimous and carried. So our second report here on the agenda is the draft Active Ipswich Strategy 2031. Would anyone like to speak to the relevant council officer? Yes, thank you.
Good morning, Marnie Orr, Sport and Recreation Office of Physical Activity.
Through the chair, thank you, Ms Orr. Thank you for the draft strategy. Just looking at the Shaker Ipswich page, which is our primary engagement, community engagement page, it states that this project's still at that drafting of the active strategy. And I know here we've got here, and it does say that we're yet to release the draft strategy for public review. So my question is, when will we be releasing that for public review?
Yeah, that's right. So essentially, we launched that page on the Shaker Ipswich website back in early 2020, just as we were obviously starting the project. So as we've moved along and gotten a draft to a stage ready for release, I guess we've had some internal conversations about the relevance of actually going back to the public at this stage for further comments. I guess we sort of realised that there wasn't much relevancy to that at this stage. Where we would actually really like to use that webpage and to provide further engagement with our community would be on some of those action plans that are falling out of the strategy. So that's where we're really going to see those tangible, on-the-ground outcomes, where I think the community will have much more valuable input into what we're putting out there. So that's the plan at this stage. But certainly we will be releasing the strategy in its entirety when, if and when it is adopted through council for public to view. But then, as we move along with those action planning pages, we'd be utilising that webpage for that.
So it would be correct to say that if it passes through here in the ordinary council meeting, it won't be a draft, it'll be the actual strategy and we won't be seeking public review?
That's right.
But we'll seek the view from residents through the action plans?
That's exactly right, yeah.
Okay, thank you. The healthy, active city alliance that's mentioned there, how do council officers see that working?
Look, it's quite an inter-negotiation. I guess when we put together this strategy, what we really found was there was a bit of a gap in terms of, you know, there's a lot of great organisations out there and a lot of community groups doing some fantastic work in preventative health, particularly around reducing obesity levels here in Ipswich. I guess best practice acknowledging that, you know, we want to be bringing everyone, all those key players together in the same room and working towards the same goal. So exactly how that looks and feels, we're quite open to negotiation on that. But we really want to see, I guess, everyone sort of in the city joining towards, you know, this strategy, getting behind it and moving towards a similar goal and outcomes for the city.
And maybe last thing, we saw, obviously since the strategy, we've become an Olympic city. Are we going to be mentioning that in there? Or I realise that we're looking at sports, at active lifestyles for all Ipswich residents?
Yeah, so obviously we started drafting the strategy well before the announcement. But I guess the core focus of this strategy is on all of our residents, rather than just that very few high-performance elite athletes. Where we will start looking at some of those Olympic and Paralympic outcomes for the city would be in some of those action plans that are resulting from the strategy. So, for example, we might have some mention of the Olympics and the impact on our sport facilities action plan, our indoor sports action plan, and perhaps even our sustainable clubs and sporting industry action plan as well. Also, you know, amongst council, there's obviously other opportunities to explore this in far greater depth, and that might be through our infrastructure and advocacy plans as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Ms Orr.
Thank you.
So I'll move that recommendation, those two recommendations, actually.
If I may say, I think the recommendation is asking us to nominate two councillors. So will we have to name who they are?
Yep, so I'm about to move that.
Sorry.
So that council endorsed the Active Ipswich Strategy 2031, including the prioritised implementation plan. That council nominate myself, councillor Andrew Fekner, and my deputy chair, councillor Kate Kunzaman, as the Healthy Active Alliance elected representatives as per the Active Ipswich Strategy 2031 Implementation Plan, action item 1.1.
Sorry. I'm sorry, it's just, I'm really...
Okay, yeah, I'm open to suggestions.
Through you, Chair, could I be considered for a nomination?
So we'll change that recommendation there to supplant councillor Nicole Johnick instead of councillor Kate Kunzaman as the representative alongside me in the Active Ipswich Strategy. Perfect. I now open that for discussion. Thanks councillor Johnick for wanting to join me. Obviously, I think this strategy is really great. And councillor Kunzaman and I are both members of the Westmoreton Diabetes Alliance, which is, which really dovetails nicely into some of that hard data that we can get about the LGA. I think that, and I've got a bit of data here from the strategy paper that was published by the Westmoreton Diabetes Alliance, and it has some pretty scary figures for our LGA, noting health is a state responsibility, but being a local government that really cares for its community, we have an obligation too. Where we have a prevalence of overweight and obese residents of 73.7%, that is more than 10% higher than the state average at 65.9%. So I see, you know, these action plans that we build that come out of this strategy as actually trying to target our residents to try and get them interested in activity. A big part of what we do at the Westmoreton Diabetes Alliance, and just in our small time that councillor Kunzaman and I have spent there, we talk about working with physicians on social prescribing, which means that preventative, you know, active prescribing that physicians can do to get people thinking about becoming more active to combat the likelihood of type 2 diabetes. Or indeed, you know, those who have early diagnoses, they have the opportunity to reverse that. So, you know, if we're thinking, you know, as elected representatives who really care about our city, it's important to know that there's hard data to support us really rallying behind and getting behind this strategy, and ensuring that those members of this alliance that we will build together, as Ms Orr said, that can be open for negotiation. And if any other councillor would like to be on it, you know, I don't think we should just limit it to two, because I think the more voices around this table, the better. You know, we open ourselves up to think about grant opportunities for activities. And that was mentioned, you know, in the executive summary of the report. It kind of opens us up to start thinking about those things. So I speak in favour of my appointment on our internal alliance and look forward to building that with the department. I also speak very highly of this strategy as an early step to combating one of the biggest, you know, health crisis that we face as a local government area as well.
Just through you, Chair, the socials...
So just a point of order, may we move in second, so we can go into comment and discussion?
Yep, I've moved. So councillor Johnick, would you like to second?
Sure, lovely, thank you.
Just through you, Chair. So the social prescription, I was at the Diabetes Alliance discussion and seen all the hard work that you guys were doing and the stats. And it really hit home the fact that the, I think it was three times the National Road toll from deaths through diabetes. So it's a massive, it might seem tokenistic, but this is actually a massive, important project. And I will be beside you in Lycra, councillor Fekner. And I will bring hypercolour t-shirts. Thank you.
Original hypercolour shirts.
Yes.
If I may, Chair, I was going to ask a question of the acting CEO. I know on page 64, when it talks about programme coordinator and capacity building, I was just asking if that's budgeted in the area there or not? Is that something that we'll have to look at?
No, in the executive, sorry, acting CEO.
Or chair, yes.
As the chair, I'll take the lead on this one. It does say that currently under-budgeted, so we will be looking for those grant opportunities. There'll be discussions that we might potentially need to have when we're building our mayor and councillor's budget for next financial year. But there is flex and in conversations with the department, in the business as usual, to get this rolling and started and focusing on potential grant opportunities that might exist as well.
Yep. I guess my comment on this, one thing is on page 63, there's a spelling error. Upon is spelt UPN, so if we could fix that up under E11. But I think this is a terrific initiative, and it'd be great to, the Ipswich Hospital Foundation do market themselves as the Westmoreton, as the official, you know, foundation for Westmoreton Health. So it does cover all of Ipswich and other areas as well. And I think they're going to be a very important partner. I think it's really important, this is not just a council run. It's a citywide, and we need to tap into very clever people and very active people on how we can do this better.
Yeah, and I think that we can all think of at least two or three people that it would be great, community advocates to be on our alliance as well. And I think that we need to really call out diversity in our alliance as well. Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islanders have, you know, worse health outcomes than the rest of Australians. They're four times more likely to develop type 2 diabetes than any other Australian. So I think that it's really important that we nurture, you know, cultural inclusion in the alliance as well. And it's something that I'll definitely be advocating for, so that we can reach all of those hard-to-reach pockets of our community, ensure that we're moving forward. Really interested in the implementation plans, what measurables we'll be able to put in place, how, you know, how effective, you know, will we be? And how can we leverage some of the data that some of these organisations already have? Westmoreton Health is obviously a huge player, but those, you know, the Public Health Network would have data to help us support that. So if we are really honest about where we are right now as an LGA and, you know, and our active outcomes, I think that we'll be able to move the dial in a really meaningful way. And that's something that we can celebrate and report on, and get people, you know, opting to use active transport. I mean, you know, our traffic engineers are, you know, pulling their hair out, thinking about, you know, infrastructure planning, you know, now, five years' time, and in 20 years' time, what does it look like? We need to start establishing, you know, I think, the attitudes of people to consider not getting in their car and driving everywhere. It's not just for the environment, but it's for your personal health as well. We've got, you know, a heavily underused piece of infrastructure in the Brussel Bike Way, grossly underutilised, but an amazing route for people to potentially take. So I think that this plays an important part in being the human aspect of what we're already undertaking in all of our strategies. We spoke about our sustainability strategy a couple of weeks ago, and that was really focused on the hard infrastructure and what are we doing about active transport. In my opinion, this is the missing piece. You know, how do we get the community rallying around it? It's all well and good to have this in our paper, but how are we pushing people to consider active opportunities in their day-to-day lives? So I really like where this sits across the suite of strategies that we've been able to implement over the last 12 months. And I really look forward to its success and trying to move the dial in that way.
If I may, Chair, I note that it's the Healthy and Active Alliance, and my experience in dealing with, you know, seeing health professionals over the years, especially dieticians, that 80% of what you do is what you put in your mouth. So it's not just active, it's also, you know, being really aware of what we're eating as well.
Yeah, I agree. You know, we've seen the move from schools and sports canteens, moving away from fizzy drinks. Unfortunately, they probably still have juices in the fridge. But, you know, there are those conscious decisions that are happening across the city. But I think, you know, and so, and it's a wonderful opportunity for us to collaborate with all of those sporting groups that lease fields from council to say, what are you putting in your canteen? Can we offer you some advice on that? Or what are the ways moving forward? I think these are all the exciting conversations that we get to have in the alliance, but as an elected group moving forward as we build around that.
And I think too, my experience, I've been on the PNC of all my kids' schools. It's really hard to, parents get very upset when you, if you try to remove the sausage rolls, or, you know, that is seen as a treat. So I guess it's, people have to also look at what's in their own home as well.
Yeah, I agree, absolutely.
Through Chair, yeah, don't get rid of sausage rolls. It's about balance.
Yeah, it is. And I think that'll come down to a few of those core messages that we can develop from this strategy. So really pleased to see the committee excited about it this morning, and thank the council officers for their work on this. It's great. No further conversation, we'll take that to the vote. All those in favour? And that's unanimous and carried. Moving on to the draft customer experience strategy. Would anyone like to talk to the relevant council officer with regards to this strategy? Mayor, thank you. I believe Mr Pascoe will be taking the stand for us this morning.
Good morning, I'm Matt Pascoe. I'm the Content and Experience Manager for Libraries and Customer Services.
Thank you. Through the chair, Mr Pascoe. Thank you for the strategy. And I know that we've been workshopping this together. But could you outline what's council's current approach to customer experience?
Oh, that's a great question. So...
And what changes are we expecting to bring in?
Yeah, exactly. Yeah. So at the moment, the customer experience methodology is very much in a business-by-business. So different areas of council are providing great customer service and often great customer experience, but it hasn't been linked together. So what this strategy seeks to do is to provide a holistic approach across all of council, and provide a single, sort of, single voice of council, so that when we speak to our customers can expect the same level and the same great experience, no matter what part of council they engage with. So that will be the difference, is that no doubt people have been receiving some great customer service and great experience in different areas. But now we can look to level that experience, or level and uplift that experience across the entire organisation.
Will this be a culture change for the organisation?
I'd say so. I'd say that we've been working very much hand-in-hand, hand-in-glove with people and culture, and making sure that this is something that's on their radar, and very much is, in that the customer focus becomes very much part of the employee experience here at council. So that we'll be looking to make sure that when our offices, no matter what part of the organisation, are doing new work or thinking about how they approach their work, they're thinking about the customer first. So it is very much a change of culture and how people approach their work.
And do you think there'll be much resistance in the organisation, or you're not sure yet?
Well, I could say to date, there's been overwhelming support, both through the development of the strategy document that we're discussing today, through the surveys, the interviews, the workshops, the conversations we've had, has been overwhelmingly supportive. Across the, I can put my hand on my heart there and say, across the organisation entirely, there's been really great uptake and really great understanding of why this is required. And now with the actual document in draft, we've been able to share that draft with some of the customer experience influencers and people who've been strategically involved in its development. And they're very much supportive of how it's looking in terms of the contents of the document to date. So yeah, we're very hopeful that this should be well received, and we should have good enthusiasm moving forward.
I note in the next steps, there's going to be a detailed implementation plan. But I also note throughout the document, we talk about the programme priorities and how will we know we are improving. Will this be measured?
Absolutely. So that's one of the things that's called out. There are three measurement standards that we're looking at implementing. But that methodology will be something that we apply across all of the work. If you, very much if you can't count it, it doesn't count, sort of approach, trying to make sure that we measure the changes in work effort on our end, but also the customer experience in the three main measures that we have outlined there for the customer. So yes, very much metrics, feedback, surveys will all be, will be part of the DNA of this project moving forward, both inside the organisation and outside.
Thank you, Mr Pascoe. Thank you, Chair.
Thanks, Mr Pascoe. Just one question about the financial implications, understanding there are no immediate financial implications of this. But noting a big piece of the customer experience will potentially lie in the I-Volve project. Do you think a lot of the success of the I-Volve will bolster this particular strategy and assist our staff in serving the community better? You know, and, you know, what can we reasonably be seen to achieve within the first three years, noting that this is going to be a slow burn in the first instance, and there's lots of moving parts? Do you see I-Volve being a big part of this that sits outside of the strategy?
Uh, I do. We've uh we've called out our engagement with the I-Volve team and with the with the process of developing the I-Volve business cases within the strategy. Um, and it's it's pretty much common sense in so much of what we've identified as requiring um reform is in the systems area. Um, uh, you know, not only with how the customers approach the systems, but a lot of it on the back end. Um, so, uh, we're we'd be looking to be major partners with the 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 I-Volve team as that as that process evolves in uh in informing those requirements and then iterating on those requirements as they, uh, as we receive the sort of data that we've been talking about back from customers. Um, so, uh, yeah, we we'd look to 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 be some of the main beneficiaries, I think, of the of world-run I-Volve. To um, uh, to answer your your question about what we can expect to see in the first three years, we've uh we've outlined a now a a parallel immediate action plan process to identify some of the the more immediate customer service focus rather than customer experience, I suppose, focused. Um, issues that we're looking to uh to fix. Uh, so, uh, people will start to see reform in in a number of customer service specific related areas. But more than that, uh, in the in the, within the first three years, given that this is a a long journey that we're embarking on, uh, people should start to see more options available online for how they can communicate and transact with council. And and they should be starting to uh starting to receive more meaningful communications and uh and um engagement with with council in in ways that that more accurately mirror a contemporary customer experience in other in other sectors and in local government sectors as well.
Awesome, thank you. Thanks, Mr Pascoe, that's all.
Thank you very much.
So the recommendation here is that council endorse the customer experience strategy as outlined in attachment one. I'll move that. Do I have a second, uh? Thank you, Mayor. I'd now like to open that up for discussion.
Yep, if I may, I mean.
Of course.
If I may, Chair, um, this is a really terrific step forward. Um, obviously, our councils had a tumultuous past and and, um, you know, we do need to, you know, adhere to the Local Government Act, which is quite clear that that councillors can't direct council staff to fix potholes and and so on. We we have to, you know, use the, go through the organisations, through the CEO, the service centre and so on. So I think, uh, certainly the feedback I've had from residents is they wish to see uh an improved customer service level. And just want to reiterate to to all residents that, um, if they use the service centre, they're not happy with the response, that they can always contact their councillors. Um, our our number and our phone numbers and our email addresses are all online. You can contact myself or any of the councils about any issues and that's how we improve as an organisation. So I think it's great that the the feeling I get from our workshops is that the organisation's really keen to do this. Um, they love, you know, serving our residents and so I think this is a great step forward for us as an organisation.
Yeah, I agree. Technology will save us all. Um, a lot hinges on the I-Volve, in my opinion, you know, to see some of the systems, the archaic systems that staff of this organisation have to use day in and day out. Um, it would absolutely do my head in. So I think that uh the evolution of technology in the workplace will go a long way to supporting our residents as well. And I can't wait to see what clever things we do with our online services. And it was really heartening to hear uh from Mr Pascoe that, you know, in the first three years, we will, um, you know, have um demonstrated to the public that we are getting better and, you know, this is a slow burn. But those front-facing services, you know, are the easier ways to contact us um online and the quality of response going back to our residents, I think that, you know, that's that's a wonderful highlight. Um, you know, from this particular strategy and the immediate implementation plans so that, you know, our customers feel heard. We're getting back to them in a timely way, um, and we can take each other on the journey. I mean, we can't just flick a switch overnight and and things are going to change and systems will improve. Um, so I think that initially the messaging to our residents are is, you know, we're adopting this strategy. We see and we hear you and we know the frustrations, um, we're working on it. Um, it's a complex web, um, but we're absolutely aware of it and we want to see better customer service improvements or the customer experience completely change um across the organisation. And I think that being involved in something like that, um, as first, as as a lot of us are first timers, I think is really exciting and and a great opportunity for our city.
I think too, if I may, Chair, um, I think it's a great way to empower staff. I think they're they're really keen to get their ideas through. So it's it's a mechanism for them to, you know, they're at the coalface, uh, for them to be able to put things forward um on how we can improve things. I think it's it's terrific.
Yeah, things will improve quickly. I mean, when you have, you know, the organisation giving that real time feedback in into the customer experience, I think that, you know, the first three to five years might seem to move a little bit slowly with technology catching up. But, you know, exponentially, um, the service uh will get better. And this is a great um roadmap um to a position where, you know, our residents think that they're being served adequately from from this organisation.
And and I'm just tapping into what you were talking about technology. I mean, I've only had my bin missed once in, in the last decade. But when I got home at night at seven o'clock, I able to, I was able to log it that the bin was missed. And when I went, left home the next morning at seven o'clock in the morning, it had already been picked up. So, you know, if I had to wait to contact my councillor or ring, wait until nine o'clock for office hours. So it was a another example of great use of technology to improve services for residents.
So I'd like to take that to the vote. All those in favour? That's unanimous and carried. Uh, moving on to item number four, civic and ceremonial events policy. Um, there's only one recommendation here and it's that the revised civic events policy as detailed in attachment one be adopted. Would anyone like to speak to the relevant council officer with regards to the policy? No, so I'll move that, uh, we adopt this as per attachment one. Do I have a second, uh? Thank you, councillor Johnick. I'd just like to open that up for potential discussion. Yes, Mayor.
If I may, Chair, I'd like to speak to you about just only one minor amendment if I can. And it's on the, at the end of, I guess, page one hundred and six or page two or five. And it says other civic and ceremonial events approved by council. I'd like to add, um, council or CEO. You know, we may have something that's come up at a short notice and rather than having to convene a council meeting, I think it would give us more flexibility to respond to the needs of our residents, so.
Happy to accept that amendment, Mayor.
Okay. I guess my only, uh, if that's taken into account, I'll just say this is great. I think this is um, as a council would like to have asked for this policy to come forward. Probably one of the things that would, that dropped off after, after, under interim administration was, um, I guess the importance of those civic events. Um, so I think it's it's quite good to see, it's not an exhaustive list. And if the residents have any other um events or things that they'd like to have this incorporated, that they wish for it to be recognised as an official civic or ceremonial event for our city, I ask them to contact us. But I fully support uh this policy, making sure that we recognise those important civic and ceremonial events in our city.
I agree. Sorry, page one oh six, are we? Yep.
At the very last one, it says, um, other civic and ceremonial events approved by council. I was just going to add or CEO. Page two. I'll just just add or or CEO to the end of that sentence. I also note, um, Chair, what's probably really important is the outer scope is just as important what's in scope.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we have deliberately not added things that are normally under our city events plan. So the Ipswich show, the Jacaranda Festival, all those things that we, any of those events where we normally provide grants and those citywide events are not in in scope. It's not that they're not an important um functional event for our city, it's that they 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 are covered under another policy at the moment.
Yep, there's other opportunities that exist within council for those particular groups. Great, so I'll take that to the vote. All those in favour? And that's unanimous and carried. That's more amendment made. Uh, moving on to item number five, quarterly event sponsorship and ticket allocation report. Um, two recommendations here, that council note the following event sponsorship was approved during the one July to thirty September twenty twenty one period. And that's category one event sponsorship, that was the twenty five thousand dollars that we spoke about. Um, for marketing and incline for tively social enterprises, uh, for the twenty twenty one New Year's Eve countdown with colour event. And that council note there were no event sponsorship ticket allocations made in that period. Um, would anyone like to speak to the relevant council officer? Noting that, I'll move those two recommendations. Do I have a second, uh? Thank you, councillor Kunzman. Would anyone like to speak to this? Pretty explanatory, that's great. So we'll vote on that. All those in favour of recommendation A and B? That's unanimous and carried. Councillor Kunzman, you obviously got your hands up there. Thank you very much. Great, so I now would like to close this meeting at thirty one minutes past ten this morning. And we might have a twenty minute break before um the next committee, so um we'll come back at ten fifty one.